Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 2nd meeting of the Reno County Commission. First item today is to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Comments by the chairman. I would like to thank those people that organized Sunday's event here at the courthouse, the Black Lives Matter event. It was well attended. I think it went very good and I'm so glad that it was organized and done here at the courthouse. Historic Reno County courthouse is where those events should happen and did happen. And again, I'd like to congratulate everybody that was involved in organizing that event Sunday.
And I would also commend law enforcement for being in attendance and handling the matter very correctly.
Well, and certainly our police chief is very vocal in that situation, was one of the speakers, and as I understand, was applauded after he made his remarks. So I hope that we're doing the things that we need to do in Reno County to have inclusiveness.
And I do understand if you see that, that there is a, at the Memorial Hall this evening, I believe, that there is a kind of a public forum type meeting tonight.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
At Memorial Hall?
At Memorial Hall.
Okay. Next item would be an update from our Health Department Director and Emergency Manager Director. Which of you are going first?
Good morning, commissioners. Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department Director, appointed health officer for Reno County. I would just give you a brief update and then a few comments from the local and state level. The United States, as of this morning, has registered 1,811,277 cases of COVID-19 with 105,147 deaths. For the state of Kansas, as of yesterday, we've registered 10,011 cases of COVID-19, 862 of those requiring hospitalizations, and 217 deaths associated with COVID-19. For Reno County, we're still at 43 total cases with 43 recovered. We have zero active cases as of this morning. We've tested 1,766 individuals with 1,723 negatives. We have 66 tests outstanding as of this morning. We have a positive test rate of 2.43%. And then if we subtract the Walmart testing positive test rate, we have a positive test rate of 2.72%, while we've tested 2.81% of the total Reno County constituency. By all accounts, well, zero active cases is good news, as always, but by all accounts, our positive test rate is overall just a general good thing associated with, or which fed into the Local Health Order Number 20-03 that was installed on Friday, May 29th, that instituted the Reno County Moving Forward Guidance Document here locally. We continue to advocate any questions associated with that guidance document and/or anyone who's looking to facilitate an event or, well, an event that has 100 or more people to just contact the Reno County Health Department, both for the opportunity to advocate our best practices on behalf of holding that event, but also that we have at least at minimum one contact should we have some COVID-related activity associated with such an activity that we can immediately make contact with the initial contact for that event, and then we can conduct case contact investigation and have a communication pathway in the immediacy for said event. I have a few notes from the state level as well. As of Friday, I won't get too much in the weeds here, but there's a statistic with the transferability, I suppose, and lack of better terms, called the R0 metric. If the R0 is less than one, then the virus potentially will die out. Right now, the virus tends to infect, on average, 5.87 individuals from an individual who is actively transmitting the virus. For the state of Kansas, we're registered as the seventh-best state in the country with an R0 of 0.87, which is good. So again, we want that to be a sub-1 ratio in terms of the R0 metric. There's a few new clusters that have stemmed from some different activities. Funerals, Mother's Day get-togethers, and it's listed here as a keg party. Mother's Day was May 10th, so there was just a reminder about the incubation period of the virus itself. Since we have a cluster now that we're investigating, and Mother's Day was obviously the first, the second week of May, there's still that time lag in terms of exposure and then when it presents itself. I think that's generally it, at least that I wanted to share with the board. Right now, just locally, we're still rather busy, but our response has shifted a bit to more education, awareness, and answering questions and just maintaining an urgency and educating around the vigilance that we can't, quote unquote, let our guard down. But at the same time, I think all activity and the questions and inquiries, at least that I've been associated with, that we've been fielding at the Health Department, have been rather positive, and there seems to be a really positive uptake of the Reno County Moving Forward Guidance Documentation. And the biggest thing, I think, is there's a lot of inquiries. The Health Department hasn't necessarily received as much as I think other individuals in the community in leadership roles, but aging care facilities, those facilities, there's a lot of questions around families wanting to go see their loved ones, and those facilities are beholden to regulations outside of the purview of Reno County. They have to uphold to regulations set forth by CMS, CDC, KDHE, and then some of those that are part of greater systems are beholden to their corporate offices, and then the guidance of their appointed medical directors as well. And so there will be some consistency among the regulations as they're upheld, but also there will be some differences among facilities. And from a public health perspective, fortunately, that's on an individual decision-making administratively. They'll set those in line with those CMS, CDC, and KDHE guidelines, but in the same token, and maybe some unfortunately, I know that that still creates some uncertainty and stress for family members that want to see their loved ones at those facilities. So I would just say that that's kind of the broader picture of the operational environment that those facilities are still operating under, and I would just ask that, you know, people still exercise some patience and grace and communicate directly with the facility that house their loved ones in terms of steps moving forward.
Okay. Nick, a comment and then a question. I was very impressed with the guidance information that your department turned out the end of last week for the community. I think it was very professionally done, attractively done. I think that people really appreciate the time and effort that the county has put into quality guidance. I've heard from people that have read the document that they thought it was very well done, and I did too. Question, is there, to your knowledge, is there a site that you can go to that shows the states that are continuing to have increasing cases? I know a week or so ago, I saw that document that showed bad states in red, and Kansas was in green at that point in time. Is there a place to see that on a continuing basis?
I've seen a few websites that are kind of monitoring that. I think the ones that I've seen have been associated with major national media outlets.
Well, I can't seem to find it anymore. Do you know from your knowledge, is there, do you know the states that are having issues at this point?
Just off the top of my head, the last national picture that I have seen in terms of measuring activity is it seems to be our southeast states seem to be having more issues of resurgence in terms of case count and day-over-day exponentiation than others. But I will say there were some other states in that picture, but generally the concentration. I will look to find that map and send it to you.
Well, it's not a big deal if it's easy to find. Please let me know if it's not.
Sure.
I understand. And with our opening up and so forth, if it's going to cause some negative issues, like you say it might, that would be seen here in another week?
I mean, at the earliest, yes. But we could also be looking at...
From then on?
Yeah, two, three weeks. But yeah, and to your point, Commissioner, all activity associated from now moving forward, we could trace back. The challenge, again, is that kind of two-to-three-week lag in terms of exposure and incubation. But we'll continue to monitor that very closely.
Commissioners, questions?
Just real quick. So number one, I just pulled up our Reno County, Kansas official website, and it used to be like a little pop-up on the side if you have any questions, and that's no longer there. Was that somebody's choice to take that out?
On our website?
No, on the Reno County Government.
Oh.
The homepage for Reno County. It would pop up a little window that would say, "Do you have any questions about the coronavirus?" And then, but that's not there anymore?
I'm not sure, to be honest, Commissioner. I would have to look into it.
I'd like to see if we can get that back. I mean, I think, as we've talked about, now is the time for education. Get the science out there and make it easy. And the same thing's true for, you know, there's a little top bar that says COVID-19 Information Center, and then it has a lot of information there. But I mean, I would like to, you know, that pop-up window or some kind of a bar that really directs people to your orders, you know, with kind of an explanation, more than just, because you got this great title, Health Order, whatever, but maybe more of a user-friendly layperson's title, just, this is, you know, you come up with it, I'm sure it'll be just fine. But I just want to make sure that we're continuing to make it stupid simple for people to get the information that they need, because one of the comments that I've gotten is, "Well, where is that? How do I find that?" And as the chair said, that's a great document with a lot of really good information in it, and I just want to make sure that that's posted far and wide, especially with our friends at the Chamber that have agreed to work with us on promoting this as well. So...
Yeah, absolutely.
Bob, I think that's an excellent comment. I think that both the Health Department, the county as a whole, I am told by people that I work with that I'm not very computer-savvy, and I think that's true. And I think we need to, people like Nick, find these things easier than some of us. So assume that the population is pretty slow with these things, too. I think your comment's well made.
Or just assume that your greatest risk population, 65 or over, wants the information. And, you know, I mean, it's, anyway, so those are my thoughts. I don't have the answer.
Sure.
I'm kind of in between that generation of computer-savvy.
Yeah, I think maybe it's a comment more to the county administrator to make sure that IT department is making this as apparent as possible on our side.
Yeah, right. Second question then, and I have to ask this. So this keg party at Mother's Day, was that a Corona keg?
I am not aware.
Will you get back to me on what that was? I'd like to know.
I think it was Coors Light.
Oh, well, then everybody's definitely going to be sick if that was a Coors Light keg.
I did, so Mike Matthews is monitoring the stream about the chat box, and I will look into this, but it looks like my staff were getting complaints about the pop-ups, so it was removed. So I'll work with Randy and make sure that...
You're getting complaints because?
I need to look into it. That's just generally the comment. So I just want to make sure...
If the complaint was, "I don't like the pop-up..."
Just minimized?
It's minimized.
Okay.
If the complaint was, "I don't like the pop-up," I can live with that. If the complaints, this is making me unable to get to my tax information, that's a different conversation.
Sure.
So I would just have you use your judgment and work with Randy and Mike, and I'm sure whatever you come up with would be great.
Absolutely.
Final thing, I talked with Captain Sean McClain out of the jail, and he said that the jail inmate had followed through the CDC guidelines and has been put back in the general population. But he said the CDC guidelines have changed on, like, you're sick, well, you're positive, and in the process you have to go through to come out of that. Can we talk a little bit about just that?
Yeah, it continues to shift a little bit at the onset of the response. It was 14 days from post-symptoms, and then it was a negative test. Well, now we know about the, now we know that we can run a PCR test even with someone who has, quote unquote, "recovered."
What's a PCR test?
Oh, sorry. Like the nasal swab?
The nasal, so the test that proves that you're positive or negative is called the PCR test?
Yeah, PCR test. Sorry, the nasal pharyngeal, not to be confused with the, like, nasal swab that's being used by the Walmart. So the nasal pharyngeal scratches your brain.
Gotcha.
Now we know that we could retest someone, we can retest them over and over again. The dead viral bodies of the SARS-CoV-2 virus can still be present, even though they might be inactive because they're dead, and so you could still register a positive. So we used to be, I say "we," the guidance used to be that we would have to register a negative test. Well, that's no longer the case because someone can keep testing positive over and over and over again because of the presence of the dead viral bodies. And so that's been shifted. And then there's been some oscillating between the 14-day number and the 10-day number. We've rested on the 14-day number, and that jail inmate, that client who tested, or the inmate who tested positive, went through the 14-day non-symptoms. In fact, they, at onset, had some minor symptoms, and through the duration of their 14-day window, had barely any symptoms whatsoever. So they've been able to traverse that entire 14-day window in terms of being defined through the CDC as actively recovered, and that's why they've been transitioned to a non-active case.
Okay. Now, you said something, I want to make sure I'm clear, you said from the last symptoms, 14 days, or is it from the test, the positive test, 14 days?
Symptoms. So you could be tested on Monday and get a positive test back on Tuesday, but your last symptom is on Friday. It is 14 days from Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to be non-symptomatic.
That's determined by public health officials.
Yeah, or a medical professional.
Well, okay. Great. All right. Thank you. That's all I had. And just another shout-out to the jail for doing such a great job with identifying this pertinent person and this situation, and then secluding them and making sure that we didn't have a cluster in the jail. They did a fantastic job down there following the protocols, and I know that you worked with them as well as their nursing staff and their doctor, I believe Dr. Potter. But anyway, they did a great job. He told me that that had changed. I was curious.
Nick, I had a question. And this is not changing, not meaning to change any protocol or any procedures at all, but I was wondering, for a sibling or spouse who has another sibling or spouse that's on their final hours of life on this earth, is there a way that maybe one or their spouse or a sibling could gown up, could completely cover up, whatever, and be allowed to spend at least a few minutes with their person that's dying?
Are you referring to the hospital or aging care facility?
Yes, both.
Both. So I know, while in both instances, I've had conversations about both, and my understanding, and even more so now because the hospital has, they've lifted some of their initial restrictions, but both entities have been, my understanding and what's been communicated to me, very open in terms of if they receive that communication, they will try and work with the family to facilitate that. That's what's been communicated to me. But I just know there's not like a blanket, they're not openly communicating that and/or have a blanket policy set in place to say, "If you have one on the final leg of life, here's the steps." It's more so that family just has direct communication with the housing entity to try and facilitate that. And to my understanding, there's been some circumstances where that's been allowed, but I think it just has to be specifically requested.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? Okay, let's turn over to Adam and see what he's got for us this morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Adam Weiser, Emergency Management Director. Just a few things for you this morning. Nick touched on it briefly, and we're slowing down a little bit. We're not quite ready to change gears yet. We're still in a response mode, but things are slowing down. With that slowdown, what's happening, at least in my office, is we're not doing resource requests through the state every day anymore. I'm going to start trying to do those once a week and free up a little bit of my time, so we're not working quite so many hours. And also, from a state level, our calls have significantly slowed down. During the, up until last week, I was taking five conference calls with the state per day. That has now dropped to two, so I now have one in five, so that frees up a lot of time as well. The state has also switched gears a little bit. Their state emergency operation center is now a multi-hazard operation center, which means that they're also monitoring flooding, and they're also monitoring the protests that are happening across the state and in the surrounding states. There was one last night in Topeka, and there was also one last night in Wichita, and they didn't go quite as well as what ours locally have done. So I appreciate your comments this morning about how well ours went, and I would echo those comments. So the state is monitoring those and seeing what requests will come out of those protests as well as flooding. Currently, across the state, there's two counties that have declared a local disaster for flooding as well as a public health emergency, and we expect some more rain coming up out of the Gulf next week. I talked to you last week, and I said I would expect all 105 counties to declare a public health emergency. Currently, we're at 104. The one outlier is Chautauqua County, and they have not declared any sort of public health emergency. Other than that, now is the time to start planning for what's going to happen in the fall. So I'd encourage all the businesses and everyone who's listening to this, figure out what went well, what we could have done better, and what we would do differently for the fall, so we can start preparing for that now. And as things slow down here, I would expect, maybe next week or the week after, we'll start pushing more information out to businesses and to the steering committee to prepare for the fall, to start planning for that now, and really switch gears into a slower response phase and really jump into a planning phase and getting ready for the next wave. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are you looking at increasing, I believe you said that you were comfortable with 15-day PPE burn rate. Are you looking at increasing that so that we can build up so we're ready for the fall, if there is a fall spike? We've got, pick a number you like, 30 days, whatever, but are you looking at changing that number and building up our supplies?
We're slowly starting to build our supplies. I'd really like to get to a 45-day.
45-day.
45-day at the height of where we were. So hopefully, you know, with the Patel system in place where we can reuse some of the PPE if we need to, we won't ever be in a situation where we were a few months ago. So I'd like to get to that 45-day mark.
And then ventilators, you're looking at some sort of increase in that? I mean, I know that we only use two or three maybe at the same time, but that is a big item that gets talked about quite a bit.
So we'll have conversations with the hospital and...
Just real quick, I'm sorry. So the hospital has the ventilators, right?
Correct.
They're the only ones with ventilators?
I believe so.
And they own them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we'll have some conversation with them and how, if they need to increase, and we'll work through our state channels if they want to increase or if they're ready to increase. I was looking at numbers last night. Currently, there's over, I want to say just north of 540 ventilators available in Kansas that aren't being used. I don't know how low that got during the height of the COVID-19.
Okay. I just know that they're hard to come by for certain states, and I wouldn't want to be in that position, because I know that you made the comment that for a lot of this PPE stuff, we were fourth, fifth, sixth on the list. If we needed ventilators, we're going to be seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th on the list. I don't want to be that guy.
I agree with you. And like I spoke about, this is the time to start planning for the fall, and this would be a great time if we need more ventilators, get more ventilators, build up that supply, so we have the ventilators, we have the personal protective equipment that we're ready for any sort of wave that could happen in the fall.
Well, but Adam, don't you feel from an emergency management direction that this spring we went through the learning phase of all this, the clinic, the hospital, your department, the nursing homes and so forth? And so if we do see a spike or an increase come along, that the ability to absorb that will be so much quicker and faster, wouldn't it be?
The biggest challenge in this learning phase, we did learn a lot from this, but the biggest challenge was the supplies weren't available. And we would send requests after requests and contact, I don't even know how many vendors, to get those supplies. And while we can take our lessons learned, and we can make policies, and we can change our procedures, we have to have those supplies there to be able to support what we're doing. And I think that's what's going to be the shortfall again, in the fall, is the supplies.
Thank you. It sounded like on Friday's governor's deal that there was adequate supply of equipment at the state level. Is that what you heard, Bob?
That's what I heard, yes. Yeah, the governor's call on Friday said that everything was going to be just fine. So I definitely think we need to get the resources we think we need.
Absolutely, on hand here.
On hand here in Reno County.
So last time...
Because we're going to be sixth on the state list, even though they got lots of supplies.
When they talked about adequate supplies with us, they told us they had 500,000 N95 masks. 500,000 is not, in my opinion, adequate. Just in the county, at the height of this, we're using over 1,800 per day. So you look at our numbers, our numbers weren't huge based off the 105 counties, so if we're using 1,800 of them, you look at Johnson County, the Ford County, what are they using per day? And that 500,000 dwindles very, very fast.
Right.
And we still haven't, speaking of that, too, we still don't have gowns. The state still can't get the disposable isolation gowns, so they don't have those either.
Yeah. It's, I think you're right. I think supplies will be the issue, even if it's a small spike or just the curve that we have right now. We need to be prepared for it. Since you brought up a governor's call, I'm just going to throw this in because the governor's call, Commissioner Horstner said it didn't have a lot to it, but the one thing I was impressed with, and this kind of fits into your world, was the National Guard response. They said they had built up to 800 National Guard people, give or take, and that they spent a lot of their time taking PPE out to outlined counties and providing them with resources. And one of the things that they were doing that I thought was fantastic was they would actually go up and pick up test samples and take them back to wherever the testing place was, which I think is Topeka, so that they were getting like a 25-hour turnaround time on that medical thing. And I just want to say that when I see what National Guardsmen are being used for in the country today, and when I see that the Kansas National Guards were used to provide PPE and also to provide...
Services.
Yeah, services to the individual counties and fast testing, I mean, I'm very proud of what the National Guard has done.
And one additional thing they've done as well is they're working on a 2 million meal project that is getting out meals to the food banks, and they've made north of 100, or 1 million meals so far towards that 2 million meal project. And talking about how much they've driven for the courier service for the test kits as well as the personal protective equipment. They had driven over 29,000 miles since that started, and those numbers came out sometime last week.
That's the perfect use of the Kansas National Guard. We should be very proud of.
And I think along with that, Randy will probably talk about the upcoming phone call today regarding the CARES funds. today regarding the CARES funds and his report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment that's not on the agenda at this point in time? Seeing that there's no one there, we'll move on to additions to the agenda. Does any of the commissioners want to propose any additions or revisions to the agenda?
I do not.
I do not. A county administrator?
No.
Okay, not, we'll assume that the agenda is as posted. The consent agenda includes vouchers in the amount of $245,177.55, one change order, and the appointment of Robin Kilgore as treasurer on the Valley Township Board. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as submitted by staff.
Second to motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item eight, discussion and action items, a discussion of Reno County Drug Court 2021 budget. Okay. No one here to present that. Randy, could you go over their request for funds for 2021?
Okay, the, hold on. Sorry, Jim. The 2021 request for the Reno County Drug Court is $10,000, which is $1,218 less than the current year's budget. And the memo from Community Corrections kind of discussed the 4,000 for recovery assistance, and then 6,000 is to purchase incentives for the program.
And I had...
Liberty Thompson had sent this in.
I had visited just a second with Judge McCarville about that, and he was unaware that they'd had dropped down from 11,000 to 10,000. So might want to check with Judge on that. And maybe he was unaware of the 11,000. Anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I can always check to see, make sure they have adequate funding for what they're needing, depending on, I guess, what the commission at some point approves.
I guess I would just say, having seen their application for a number of years and their reputation in the community, I don't, I didn't see any problems or anything that raised these flags with me in the budget or presentation. I mean, I wish somebody was here to talk about it, but I don't. Did you gentlemen see anything that...
No, I guess I was impressed that all, our commitment is $10,000 towards that court. I think most of us have been there, watched the court and so forth, and it does some very valuable things, and so I have no problem with the request.
I don't either.
And they do have requests. You can kind of see their revenues. They also get a good amount from the city on the alcohol funds, so.
And they should. And they definitely should.
That's what the money's for.
That's what the money's for, yes. Which we had a special fund.
Okay, if there's no further questions there, we'll go on to a discussion of a contract with Kansas Department of Health for an expanded child care licensing grant award. Our health director, please discuss this.
Morning Commissioners, Reno County Health Department Director Nick Baldetti. Before you, for discussion is an, a preliminary grant award for the child care licensing program from the state of Kansas. And I'll just give you a brief history, and then the timeline of this program that led to me coming before you. Traditionally, this grant award is part of our standard aid to local package that we submit for every year. We apply for those aid to local grants, for which CCL, or Child Care Licensing, is one of the traditional grant awards that we seek, and is a program we administer. And then we usually receive our grant award middle to late end of June, just in time for state fiscal year to start July 1. And then we receive our allocations as such, based off the state fiscal year. The child care licensing program here in Reno County, we've been doing child care licensing for many years. The child care licensing program itself seeks to license child care licensing daycare centers and out-of-home child care providers in the community, ensure that they meet all regulations set forth by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment in the establishment and maintenance of a licensed child care facility, and then assure the quality and standards of those facilities. And then, should there be any complaints or concerns filed on behalf of a facility, or quote-unquote, "a potential provider," then we conduct investigations as such, and that's the general purview of the CCL program. Associated with the CCL program, too, is the aspect of education, because licensed child care providers do need to undergo education, and they require CEUs to be licensed with the state of Kansas. And then additionally, educate and advocate for more individuals to pursue being a licensed child care provider. I think, you know, licensed child care for Reno County specifically has continued to be a topic in terms of access to child care economically, as well as just a simple ability to have more child care available, to try and decrease barriers for people trying to integrate into the workforce. Earlier, this, or I should say, and shameless plug, but our licensed child care surveyor has recently retired, retired a week ago. But the program has a storied history in Reno County. We're extremely successful. We carry about a load of 128 different facilities, give or take, which the state asks for a ratio of about 80 per child care surveyor. So our child care surveyor is one FTE, mostly funded by the Aid to Local Grant. And we've had one CCL surveyor basically doing almost one and, one and three quarters of what the ratio, or what the state defines as the applicable ratio of facilities per FTE. And we've done it all with meeting the associated metrics in terms of, we're close to, if not right at, 100% response rate, in terms of when we receive complaints of a facility that we're out there within, I'd say they're 24 or 48 hours to begin, begin our investigation, to ensure the safety and well-being of the kiddos that are, that are being, that are being monitored there. So with that, I would say some of that history of our program is also why the ask came to us. The Kansas Department of Health and Environment, specifically the child care licensing program, reached out to us in early January in Reno County, and asked if we would be interested in potentially absorbing the Harvey County program. Part of the impetus that has been described and laid out to me in the conversations I had with the state, is that they're impressed with the work of the Reno County Health Department's CCL program. Additionally, they are seeking cost-cutting measures at the state level to try and, try and find ways to decrease budgets across the state. Additionally, the way the structure is, is there's regional surveyors from, that are employed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and they're trying to have those regional surveyors operate in more of the technical assistance and resource capacity, more so than what is happening in certain areas of the state right now. That is, they're actually on, they're, they're filling in and being boots on the ground in terms of doing actual investigations at the ground level. And that's what they're hoping to circumvent. At least that's what has been described to me. Additionally, Harvey County, and I'm going to get this number wrong, but I think they have somewhere in the neighborhood of around 50 facilities in Reno County, or I'm sorry, in Harvey County. So part of the motivation and the ask is, we've also had really good success here in Reno County in terms of our education of our child care licensing providers, and then recruiting new providers to the best of our ability here in Reno County. And I think the state is trying to harness a little bit of that, and see if we can repeat that success in Harvey County. So we were asked if we would be interested in absorbing the Harvey County contract. And the short of the long story is, I had a number of conversations with Harvey County's, my peer in Harvey County, the director of Harvey County Department, we had a number of conversations with Harvey County, myself, and the state on the line to make sure everyone was synergistic in terms of, you know, this program potentially moving, and, and what the ask would be. Additionally, their licensed child care surveyor, right now in the interim, because our surveyor has retired, but the work still has to go on, we've actually entered in a, into a one-month kind of agreement that if we had complaints that the Harvey County surveyor, as it stands now, because their contract runs through the remainder of this fiscal year for the state, would come and help us out in Reno County, because we don't have one. We're actively looking for one right now. And then, with the absorption of this, we're in conversations with Harvey County and this individual to see if they would just transfer over to being a Reno County employee as well, so we would only still be looking for one FTE. That's a kind of general rundown. I'm going to jump to the last page of the information that was given to you, which is the detailed budget for grant funds. And this is actually, this is broken down in terms of what we, what we received. We already amended it. We actually asked in totality, we asked for the 208,437, which you see would have, is the combination of both the requested and the match. And what the state came back with is, they essentially just asked us to pick up the benefits for, for the two surveyors, so they are tentatively awarding us $132,080 associated with the expansion of the program. To put that into a little bit of perspective, they gave us some fiscal wiggle room in terms of personnel salaries, in that we were, we were paying our previous surveyor, we were paying them 51,480 in annual salary. So they gave us a little bit north of just doubling that, that individual's salary. And they were, in terms of Reno County, they were certainly, they were already into the range on our pay scale, so they were on the top end in terms of our pay scale. So they're, they're tentatively awarding, again, that $132,080. The only other caveat, which is also built into, built into the Health Department CIP budget this year, is the one thing that KDHE said that they would not pay for is a vehicle. And so that was written into, written into the CIP budget. But again, I think we have some options there. Again, we don't necessarily have the exact model yet, because we've been waiting for KDHE's, this kind of grant award. We wanted at least something in paper. Again, this isn't any kind of signature page, but my expectation is that this is what we'll be seeing when we get the actual contracts to be signed and executed by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So I'm confident there. But the model that I speak of is, if we do follow through with hiring this individual on, who is currently a Harvey County employee, she resides in Harvey County, and essentially would be lead on Harvey County facilities, and then would be overflow help for Reno County, and so we would have them coming back. The initial idea is, we would have the Reno County vehicle, so that they would have that access, so that we're not paying individual mileage. But we could circumvent that and seek to have mileage reimbursement on the individual's personal vehicle. Again, that model, in terms of the expense of purchasing a vehicle, is still up in the air, and basis for discussion in terms of how we make this work. But in terms of coming before you, I wanted to bring awareness, because this is atypical, than the standard Aid to Local Grant application that you would normally see, we usually request about $60,000 every year for the child, the licensed child care program. We usually receive about $48,000 to $50,000, which just, just barely covers, or had just barely covered, our surveyor's salary. And so you can see that, you know, they certainly met our request. They didn't meet our full request, but they certainly met more of our request than traditionally what we have been receiving, because they do want us to seriously consider absorbing the Harvey County region.
Nick, why would the Harvey County Health Director be in favor of this approach? It seems like it's minimizing their department.
Yeah, so I don't want to necessarily speak for Lynette, but from the conversations that I did have, I think there, I think the conversations that I had, there was a realization of that, but at the same time, there was an understanding of what was being asked. I would, in some respects, I think, when we came to agreement, well, let me backtrack. I don't think, if it wasn't for the professional working relationship that I have personally with Lynette, and the work that we've undergone in partnership with Harvey County already on other work, much like our substance abuse grant and our tri-county regionalization for the application of that opiate work, I think those relationships have certainly played in favor of this, which also may have led the state to greater consider this. Additionally, I think through the professional relationships that our organizations have together, I think there's more of a willingness to see this come to fruition. The biggest, the biggest ask out of Lynette, my peer in Harvey County, was that we seriously consider taking on their current surveyor, more so than it was a greater concern of my capacity is decreasing because of this, because essentially, we're taking on all that work in terms of the licensed child care program. But...
And so what's the benefit to Reno County? The ability to have two people so that they move back and forth as needed better?
Yeah, so, so having, having two individuals in terms of the overflow capacity, again, we had one, we had one surveyor who, quite frankly, our, our surveyor for the last eight years is an ex-DCF employee, who's a social worker by trade, and quite frankly, is married to the work. He's very good at what they did. But I don't think it is comparable to ask someone new to come in and have the same amount of output with the same amount of passion, so to speak, that this individual had. So again, we've been able to get by for eight years with a facility count of about 128, with the work of this individual, simply because this individual is married to the work. The benefit for us is that essentially, I think the balance, as it's been described to me by Kansas Department of Health and Environment, is to counterbalance having two LCCs. You have, you have Harvey County that has about half the ratio that they want to see for an LCC, and you have one FTE here with about 1.5. And so they bring two over here, and we could benefit from the overflow to assist, assist here in Reno County, and try and get each one of those FTEs working about 80 facilities in totality. And then they want to see really our work and the success... and the success we've had in terms of education and recruitment translate into Harvey County where they, they have expressed some concerns in terms of that aspect of the program itself.
So if I was a childcare provider in Harvey County and this agreement goes through, would I receive a document from somebody in Reno County?
Most likely it would be, it would be a joint document because there's a, there's a history of working with the Harvey County Health Department. And so most likely it would be a Reno County, Harvey County.
Do you see my concern there? If I was a resident of Harvey County and I got this document from Reno County, I'd say, why?
Yeah.
So you think you can coordinate that response with Harvey County so that it would look and feel the same?
Yeah, I, I don't have a terrible amount of concern in addition to the fact that the CCL program is heavily KDHE-driven. And really, the surveyors at the local level are generally proxies of a KDHE program. So most communication that our surveyors are receiving are actually from KDHE in totality.
So are you having trouble finding a new person for Reno County?
No, we have, so we have at least five applicants, which three of which just at face value look rather promising. And we're in the throes of interviewing this week.
Commissioners have thoughts?
You mentioned the state was wanting to cost cut. I don't know whether my fellow commissioners have ever seen all that paperwork that's involved with just getting a license, much less keeping one. If, I would encourage our legislators to, KDHE, to simplify some of that paperwork that has to be done.
Childcare agency.
Childcare agency, yes, excuse me. Yeah, thank you. I would encourage them to look at something, way to simplify some of that extensive paperwork that's involved in that.
Commissioner Hirsch, that's a good thought. And I guess we, I wish we'd write some of these things down so that when we do have meetings with our legislative group, you know, we definitely seem to forget those things at that point in time. But obviously we should be asking them for help to simplify the process.
The reason I have seen those papers is because I was asked to help with a community that was wanting to put a childcare center together for their citizens in that area, rural area. And so after inquiring, I just, I understand why, why it's so difficult and, and time-consuming from the business standpoint.
Well, what about the car thing? I'm confused about the car. Are we, is the car going to be a cost to Reno County?
Yeah, so again, the conversations that were had with KDHE is they basically told us to write the budget we wanted and they would reward us. But the one thing that they told us, the one thing we won't fund is a car.
Well, do they fund the car here?
Say that again.
Do they fund the car for the worker that worked for Reno County?
Oh, in the current contract, no, they do not. That's a, that's a county asset. So county asset in totality. There's no grant funding that goes there. Now, we do charge mileage that is associated with the vehicle use, but the vehicle itself is a county asset.
And we, Commissioner Sellers, we've done a pretty good job of alternating vehicles when one gets to a certain miles to where they have. It doesn't necessarily have to be a new vehicle. If we have a vehicle that can be exchanged and routed around to different departments, that is still suitable. So hopefully that can continue that process to where.
Yeah, and they've done a good job with keeping an eye on their maintenance. I mean, they're, they're, some of it is high mileage, but it's very easy mileage. Not like we're seeing with public works and things like that. It's all roads. Of course, you answered most of my questions and Commissioner Sellers followed up with some. I just want to make sure that we're welcome there. I mean, to me, that's the biggest key because when the state comes in and asks one county to help another, sometimes that comes with baggage and I just want to ensure that that's not the case. And your comments about your respect for the quality of the current Harvey County worker wanting to make them a Reno County employee goes a long way with my belief that there would be a good crossover and very positive in terms of putting us together. Is, is, I mean, do you feel that way, really? Yeah, you know, we have a, we have an outstanding working relationship with Harvey County, at least from the public health perspective. But there's nothing that, and I would even say from their emergency management perspective as well. So there's nothing in the immediacy that would lead me to believe that there would be any.
Issues.
Yeah, okay. I, I think it'd be well received and we are, we are trying to make this as amicable as possible for both counties. Yeah, so I mean, we're working very closely with.
Okay, so we're not approving this today?
No, it's just a discussion item, yeah.
Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
So then, I mean, I do like the idea that we're going to have this person with Reno County with the experience as you hire a new person to kind of show them the way. And this puts you closer to your number. You said that the recommended is 80? 80 facilities basically per FTE?
Yeah.
And so you would have two FTE and according to this, 128 Reno and 50 Harvey. You come up with 178. So we're not going to be overtaxing the staff that we have as long as the Harvey County person understands they're going to be coming over and doing a lot of work in Reno County.
Yeah.
And if that's understood and amenable to, to that individual, I mean, and I'm supportive of the project.
I would be, I would be also. I, I think this, the research done by the health, both health departments, Harvey and Reno, and our working relationship with Harvey as commissioners too.
Yeah, I think all the front work's been done, just a matter of doing the project and seeing what comes up.
Okay, Nick, I think you've received the feedback that you need. Okay, we had somebody join us. Are you with the drug court? Okay, you might come and address this. We already had the county administrator discuss this, but please tell us about why you're asking us for $10,000 this year instead of 11,280 of last year.
Sure.
Say your name.
Yeah, can you hear me? Probably not. Nick's a lot taller than me.
Thank you.
Liberty Thompson. I work with Reno County Community Corrections. I'm the drug court coordinator for the Reno County Drug Court Program. Every year, the drug courts depends on special alcohol tax funds from the county and from the city to run the program. This year, our ask is 10,000. We utilize those funds. We utilize them for a multitude of things. Transportation, IDs, medications, incentives for people in the program. Just a multitude of, of things that they need to help reduce barriers. Last year, our ask was a little higher because we did a special incentive program. Last year, they, the team members came together and decided they wanted to do a little something more than gift cards. And so that's why our ask was a little bigger last year. And there was more funding available last year too. So normally, our ask does run around 10, around $10,000 every year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for the explanation. That helped me understand some things.
Okay, thank you.
What you, what you missed was a great discussion about how wonderful Drug Court is. You've seen the grants for a number of years. You do a fantastic job. You have a great reputation in the community. We just did have some questions about the budget piece.
Sure, and I apologize. I was working with clients this morning. We're just used to having them come back into the office now. And so I had a multitude of them waiting on me this morning, so.
No problem.
I apologize for my lateness.
No, you're fine.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for, yeah, thank you for coming.
Okay, county administrator report. Randy, what items do you have this morning?
Okay. To let you know that right now, it looks like preliminary, the preliminary estimates are valuation, valuations are up about 2.5% for Reno County. So we got the state assessed, that's up. So everything came in with increases. But Donna sent me an email this morning. It was 2.5%, so that is good news. And of course, you know, last week I sent an email out about sales tax. The March sales tax, or sales tax we just received in May for March were down just a little bit, but not, not much to worry about at this time. So we'll see the April receipts for June and have a better picture of COVID and the impact on the sales tax. Then I was going to mention that today at 2:00 PM, you can watch it on the governor's YouTube channel, the Spark Task Force. That's the group, the committee that she has put together that will help discuss the distribution of $1.25 billion in CARES Act funding. So that'll be today at 2:00 PM on Governor Kelly's YouTube channel.
Could you talk just a little bit about the CARES Act and how it impacts county specifically, please?
There was a portion, so some of this money is, well, it's all from the federal government, gets sent to the state. Some went directly to Johnson County and Cedric County because they're over 500,000 in population. The remainder went to the state of Kansas to then distribute to other municipalities and businesses as they see fit.
As they see fit.
That's my understanding. It's up to the state, this task force, to decide where that money goes. Some of it may still go back to Johnson County and Cedric. I, I don't know that it says that they can't get more money.
Right. There's no formula.
There's no formula.
Okay, okay.
Leavenworth County, I know last week sent a, a letter to the governor's office demanding, I think it was over a million dollars that they, or a good amount of money. They felt that Leavenworth, being one of the larger counties, after you take out Johnson and Cedric, should get a good portion of that money for Leavenworth County. I don't have an estimate of what Reno County should get or will get.
And you haven't been asked?
Haven't been asked, no. This is the state, state of Kansas doing this work. And looking at the committee members, you have the president and CEO of the Kansas Hospital Association, former president and CEO of Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, Senator Jim Dinning, Jill Docking, and Alice Martiney out of Greater Kansas City Building and Trades Council. So all business people or elected officials, so there's not.
That's it?
There's, I think, subcommittees. That's the main committee. There are subcommittees, so.
Anybody from Reno County that we knows on this?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Have you heard anything about Reno County? I mean, any?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Been involved.
I guess we take what we get.
Why don't, help me, just got an idea, but it probably needs some help from the other commissioners. Randy's very good at writing letters to our legislative group. I would think maybe a letter to our legislative group acknowledging that we know that this is going on and, and we would hope that the legislatures use their influence such that we get an appropriate amount that is for Reno County. I'm assuming there'd probably be some healthcare funds there. I think the hospitals are short of money with what's gone on and all. But I think at least if we notify our legislators, they can call their resources and so forth and maybe do a better job than we can of getting an appropriate amount.
Sure.
So Randy, would you do that as soon as possible? I think it's timely that we need to get that information to our legislative delegation that we're concerned about Reno County funding under the State CARES Act.
I think that's a, an excellent idea. We need to do whatever advocacy we can.
I think that's how important it is that, that we become a little more involved with not only our own legislators, but some of the chairs of committees that maybe we haven't taken enough time and, and gone to PICA and done those things and be actively involved. And so something, it's hard to do because of time situations. But it's something that I certainly think that just because of the things that continue to come up here, that we allocate some, some of our funds to be able to visit and lobby, so to speak.
Certainly. And maybe instead of a letter, an email is more appropriate because it is a very timely situation, you know?
Okay, I'll reach out to all the area legislators.
Okay, other items that you have, Randy?
Well, I just, I just wanted to go back real quick and just say, I agree with Commissioner Hirsch. We have always been a very apolitical board commission, taking care of Reno County and our business. And as things come up, we respond, but we're not, we don't active, actively go out in a proactive manner to work with our legislators, except for a couple of meetings that we schedule a year. But when issues come up, you need to have a, a strong relationship. And I think your point's well made about identifying meetings of value or, or, you know, setting up more meetings with local representatives as well as senators representing us to, to, to be part of that discussion process. Instead of inserting ourselves, which was what we've done the last year or two, which has been very well received, I think, but sending letters and emails is not the same as being able to call up and say, hey, Joe, what's the deal with this? I would encourage the commissioner to look at that.
What would, what would the commissioners, thank you, just as an administrator, think of, to broaden our base with legislators? If we considered visiting with our quad county members about inviting the legislators to a quad county meeting, at least, you know, just as a thought.
Sure.
Maybe you might, Randy, you might think about that and see if that would be something that, that maybe they would be interested in doing also as membership.
I think anytime you want to face name, first, first-name basis with a legislator, I think you're a step ahead.
Well, and I think if you're going to do that, you need to have a very concise and list of things that you really want to discuss and have it, instead of just a general meeting, we'd sure like your support and so forth. I've been, we've all been to those. A case in point that might be a bullet item on there is Adam's concern about the state having enough preparedness in the future for pandemic-type issues. It would seem like to some of us that both the US government and the state really wasn't prepared the way they should be to help us now.
That's a good idea.
And to correct those things, you need to be talking about it now instead of the next emergency that we have.
I agree.
And obviously, that takes funding. Randy, we've been interrupting you, so go ahead with your items.
The only other thing, I did, my office prepared a report and I, I can hand these out in future meetings. This is a year-to-date total expense budget report, just to kind of show, so you can see by department within various funds, what their budget is, what they've spent year-to-date, what's remaining, percent used. But through May 28th, the total for all county operations was about 22% spent. Now, some of that had courthouse general, which is a large amount that has projects that have not been undertaken yet. So, but looking at this, most were in the low to mid 30s of what they had spent through most of May. So the departments are doing a good job.
I'd like to see that report and I'm sure the other commissioners would too. Can you update us on, did we get the project done at the top of the courthouse to secure the, there was, we issued funds to do temporary repair that was necessary? And I haven't heard anything about whether that had happened.
It's not complete yet. We're still doing some work. So there, there will be stuff done, work done this year still.
Okay, but wasn't there emergency temporary repair and then we were going to do permanent repair?
I think there may have been some temporary repairs that have been done, but the bigger part of the rest of that project is still. part of the rest of that project is still not completed.
And have you heard an update on the window project?
Harland sent me an email yesterday and I was in other meetings, so I have not read it yet.
Okay. Well, obviously, I'm sure some things have slowed down due to the fact it's difficult for people to meet at this point in time, so.
But I also think you make a good point that now that we're kind of through some of the high energy with the pandemic issues, now's the time to get back on some blocking and tackling.
Yeah.
So, I think you bring up some good points, and maybe we could get a quick report on the status of the chair's questions next week?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, other items, Randy?
No, that's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have items this morning?
Just one question, uh, regarding the upcoming, uh, June 18th, uh, public comment for the planning commission. Uh, has there been, uh, where is this going to be held? Do you, have you had any ideas on, on how that's going to be? I think it was going to be originally here in the
So, on June 18th, yes. The planning commission will have a Board of Zoning Appeals hearing at the Public Works Facility. That's where they're going to start their 4:30 meeting because they had already published that notice. So, they'll take that one case, then after that case is over, they will move up here to the courthouse. So, the wind energy regulations discussion will be in the veterans' room. We'll have security work a little late that night to let everybody in. The veterans' room will be set up. We'll still limit the number of people because of social distance limits. Um, we'll televise on the TV out here in the courthouse what's going on downstairs and a waiting area up here. And, um, I'll be here and other staff maybe to help make sure people go back and forth between, um, this lobby area and the veterans' room.
And hopefully, what, my concern is if that will be a workable, uh, we've had problems before with that, TV working and so forth.
Oh, the IT?
Yeah, the TV will be working. There is a delay. I know when it's recorded in here, there's about a 40-second delay from what you guys are talking about and what they see, so.
Okay.
But it's
How many will the, will the, what would be the capacity to do the distancing down there in the room? It's a pretty good-sized room. Will it hold 25?
We probably could get 15 to 20 at least down there and then plenty up here.
Okay.
25 to 50 up here.
And what time would that start then? Would you say?
5:30.
5:30, it's set for 5:30?
I didn't see a time. So, PZ will do their first meeting down there at 4:30?
4:30.
They'll come up here and they'll start the next meeting at 5:30?
That's when Dawn has sent out notice, or at least I know he's notified some of the wind energy people that have contacted him for 5:30.
Okay. And there will be public comment at that meeting?
Yes.
And public comment will be limited to three minutes, five minutes, do you know?
I do not know that.
Okay. And
I believe it said five on the, some of the comments, but they may change for this. I don't know.
Well, five's kind of a standard. I just didn't know we were keeping that.
They'll never get done if they have a five-minute.
They may also, I mean, I'm not sure what the planning commission is going to do. They may limit
Yeah, what kind of a stossiness?
People don't say the same exact thing.
Yeah.
You know, the same
Kind of like what we did here. We said, okay, kind of like what we did up here. If you, if somebody's already said this, said, I agree with so-and-so.
Randy, why?
That never happened. They still just said the same thing.
Why are you trying to do this in
But it was well intentioned.
Rooms that aren't large enough instead of, say, going to
Crystal Ballroom?
Convention Hall or something of that nature? Is it because of our ability to tape?
It's so that we can televise this. We wanted to be able to televise with the importance of this. That way we have records of it and people that may not be able to make it can still watch what's going on.
I understand that. I, I, I think like Commissioner Hurst said, it's pretty awkward moving people from outside this chamber to the veterans' room. I, I would expect you're going to have a hundred-plus people here.
I would expect you're going to have a second, I would expect a second meeting. Uh, have they set a cutoff time, like something reasonable, like eight o'clock?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I, you might want to speak with the chair about that, uh, because if it
I, I don't know if it's our prerogatory, Bob, to, uh, tell them how to run their meeting, but it seems like to me that they need to hear as many people as possible, as briefly as possible and, and knowing that there's probably going to be
Who knows?
Fifty speakers, that's a lot of time.
And they are also taking written comments.
Right.
So, the people don't have to physically be here to speak with the planning commission. They can send that in writing.
Certainly. Okay.
Well, I would not presume to tell them what to do, but I would certainly recommend and suggest that they set a cutoff time, whether it's eight or nine o'clock, because after a while
Yeah.
You just, I mean, I, as sitting, as the person listening to these comments at different meetings, you lose, it loses its value after so much time. And that's also disrespectful to the person that is sitting up here that has to, like you said, get shuttled down there to speak. And I'm sure they've thought of that, but you might want to
Okay.
See what their plans are.
I'll talk with Dawn.
Suggest, Randy, that the commission is interested in, uh, the hearing, but also doing it, uh, in a timeframe that is appropriate.
Yeah, I don't think we can tell the planning commission how to run their meetings. I think that's been pretty well told, but
Nope.
On the same hand, uh, everyone needs to have that opportunity to be heard, even, you know, with
That's why I think they'll go to a second meeting.
That's why they may have a second meeting. Yes.
We had to have three meetings the first time.
Yes.
So, I think second would be good.
Remember those.
Okay, Ron, do you have other items?
No, sir.
Okay, Bob, do you have items this morning?
No, I've been chit-chatting with Ron. I don't have any other items.
Okay, um, anything on the, uh, we, uh, gave money to do this, uh, county-wide fire district survey? Is that moving ahead now?
Good point. Good question.
I have not heard from Adam any updates. Last I knew, the individual from Wisconsin had not been able to come down here because of the COVID and stay-at-home orders. The surveys have been completed, but, um, so
All of them?
I think all of them have been.
Oh, good.
I would, I would suggest that we need to, uh, suggest that we move ahead with that. Where, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got some upcoming requests for significant expenditures in the fire districts, and I'm very uncomfortable with spending that money without having a long-term plan. That's just from my standpoint. Uh, Randy, when will you have us more definite budget numbers to start looking at? It always seems like to me that we kind of don't quite have enough time and enough meetings of, to go through there and think through what we might decrease. We're probably not going to increase anything, but
I think we're probably
Where we might decrease something.
I have, um, all the department budgets. What I'm working with, I'm starting to meet with them to talk about some narratives to put with their requests or summaries that will help you guys see a bigger picture instead of going through every single line item, kind of a general overview of the budget.
Sure.
So that you can kind of see what
But you're talking about two or three weeks till we get that information?
Probably, it'll be toward the end of June, yes.
I think it'll help.
And we have to pass the budget when?
September now, isn't it?
Uh, that won't be, well, that was vetoed.
Oh, it was.
But for the current year, I believe August 15th is when you have to adopt the budget.
Well, again, it always seems like to me it kind of gets down to a meeting that you got to hurry to make some decisions. And so, our, my request would be as soon as possible on that information.
Okay.
I think April's sales tax number will figure into that, too.
Yeah.
Well, certainly, and, and the fact that, uh, due to the virus and so forth, we cut some funds for the rest of the year, I think, uh, some of that needs to be thought through in this next budget process is, uh, uh, valuation's up two and a half percent. That's, unless we have the potential to lower the mill levy, that's an automatic tax increase for people. And that concerns me at this point in time, tax increases, even if it's a, even if it's on the property, well, if your valuation goes up two and a half percent, uh, you've got a tax increase built in unless we decrease the mill levy. And I'm very concerned about that this year. Everything that we see, that we've got layoffs in the county, we've got businesses that are closed in the county, uh, I think we need to be very frugal with this next budget.
And just kind of a reminder, what I can bring to you from the departments are their expenditure request. There may be some revenues, but the actual, we can take the valuation going up two and a half percent, but the actual estimated valuation comes out, I believe, July 1.
Mm-hmm.
That's when we get it for all entities, and we'll have all of the revenue information July 1. That's kind of why there's been a little bit of delay. You can see all the expenditures. I can bring you the expenditures, but you're not going to see it in, in a form that, to compare it to a mill levy or taxes. It would just be expenditures 2021 compared to expenditure request or actuals of previous years.
We've got a situation, too, that I don't know how it affects us. I can't give you the numbers or percentages, and that's the oil and gas revenue and taxation.
Certainly.
Which is down.
And that speaks to your point, which is we receive this data July 1st, but then we have to decide by August
15th.
15th. Unless there's some magic done at this next legislative session that gives us to September, but we'll see.
Yeah.
So, you're saying clear the August calendar?
Well, I'm not comfortable making tax decisions in one meeting or two meetings, and that's where I'm telling the administrator that, and I think even if you can give us last year's expenses and your proposed this year's expenses, even without knowing the total tax thing, that gives us something to move from.
Sure.
Uh, you know, Ron, you're closer to this than I am, but with the present commodity prices that are out there, I think, uh, increasing taxes to, uh, to our farmers is, is a problem this year.
Uh, definitely will be. Uh, livestock people as well as green
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
Whole encompassing agriculture production.
Across the business.
I guess with, are there, if there are cuts, so I can prepare directors or depart, are there any specific types of programs that you'd be more interested to see cuts in?
Well, county administrator salaries might be the first place to look at, if you're asking for, uh, easy ones.
Easy ones.
No, I, I know what I'm saying is, is easy to talk about and hard to do. I understand that, but, um...
We'll do our part and won't ask for any raises. How's that?
There you go. Well, but I think it's also important to remember that, you know, you've made significant cuts on the existing budget.
Yes.
We don't know what the numbers are. And then I know that you've talked to staff about having a pretty frugal budget coming up for next year. So, a lot of this may lay into, hopefully
Lay together.
This may lay together very well because I believe that everybody has taken, you know, this seriously with the cuts. Uh, it, so I think, let's get all the numbers in front of us.
I think it'll come together pretty easy.
But we've been aggressively cutting now, and hopefully that will then result in just what you're saying, which is, uh, some relief on the taxpayer.
Well, if not relief, no increase.
And maintaining our staff and not furloughing. And I'd like, and I'd like to see if there's a step increase in there.
Okay, yeah, because right now the numbers do show that.
Good. So, let's, so we'll just leave it alone and then, but that's up for discussion.
And the numbers also right now show about a little over $300,000 in vehicles. $200,000 of that is the sheriff's office.
Sure.
So, if that's something
Well, I think we've all expressed the point, uh, maybe Commissioner Hurst and myself more so, but Bob to somewhat, that with the vehicles being produced to last longer, we need to look at, can we add a year's life to vehicle program? That would save us significant monies.
And I've checked with Kyle with the auto center and he
He feels so.
He's comfortable with them going another year, all the vehicles we have.
And I'm comfortable with that as well, as long as we're looking at it at a department-by-department budget situation, because the sheriff's department is hard on their vehicles and they need quicker replacement than the public health department does.
Yeah, but the public health department's getting hand-me-downs, too.
Well, right, and that, but that's what I'm saying. I mean, it needs to be looked at from more of a, you know what, we're cutting, everybody cut five vehicles, have a nice day. Public works. I mean, don't get me wrong, they seem to get a lot of new pickup trucks, and at the same time, they're out there on the roads, you know, doing a lot of things. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, cutting our nose to spite our face in two to three, four years with all of a sudden big vehicle bills. And I know you gentlemen agree with that.
Sure.
So, we just need to look at it.
Okay, any other comments this morning?
Yeah, I think, I think just one thing we all know, we've stressed this before, is government itself has source of income of taxes. Uh, if you, you don't have many choices when it comes to decreasing. It's where do you decrease in services? And, uh, it's basically it. You can increase, the big, big thing, oh, we can, the only other thing you can do is increase your asset base, which is either more jobs, new companies, expansion of present companies, uh, it's economics.
Well, I, I agree, Ron, Commissioner Hurst, but I also know that one of the reasons that we hired the county administrator that we have here is his expertise and usage in the past in his other county of doing some priority-type budgeting.
You're right.
And I think we need to lean on him to do some of those things that aren't as easy for us to do.
Yes, and, and not, just speaking for me, I'm not that knowledgeable as he, as the administrator is.
Well, I think if, I think if we take your suggestion of cutting a salary off the table, we'll get a better response.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that's
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
I got you, Mark.